Good morning and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, September 30th. I'm Noe Martinez, the President of the City Council. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, we're present.
Bonin.
Bonin, present.
Buscaino.
Here.
Sidiyo.
Sidiyo, present.
Harris Dawson.
Here.
Corretz.
Present.
Grecorian.
Here.
Lee.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
O'Farrell.
Present.
Price.
Present.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rue.
Present.
Westen.
Madam Clerk, please continue.
Oh, sorry, the screen went blank. Thirteen members present in the quorum, Madam President.
Okay, first order of business.
Approval of the minutes of September 29, 2020.
Mr. Harris Dawson moves, and Mr. Buscaino seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Bonin moves, and Mr. Lee seconds, next.
Madam President, would council like all items to go forth with today?
Without objection, that will be the order.
Item number one is an item notice for public hearing. For item one, the tabulated value of the opposing ballots cast does not exceed the tabulated value of the supporting ballots cast. Sixty-six point two four percent to thirty-three point seventy-six percent. Thus, a majority protest is found not to exist, and the proposed establishment of the Chinatown Property and Business Improvement District may be authorized at this time. Items two through thirty-one are items for which public hearings have been held. For the record, there is a technical correction to item four. The correct case number is CPC dash two zero one eight dash six four three six dash ZCJ dash SPR. The corrected Planning and Land Use Management Committee report is now online. Items thirty-two through thirty-six are items for which public hearings have not been held. Item number thirty-seven on the supplemental agenda is an item for which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order. Madam President, there is a request to hold item thirty on the desk for an amendment. Okay, we're going to go ahead and do that. So, members, if you wish to call any of these items special for discussion or amendments. Mr. Sidiyo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am on item number thirty-four. I'm submitting a resolution that clarifies the Seventh Clause with additional countries of origin that may be impacted. The substitute resolution also includes support for administrative relief for TPS holders until legislation is enacted.
Mr. Sidiyo, are you introducing a substitute motion or an amendment to this item?
Substitute. Substitute resolution.
Okay. Okay, do you have a second on this?
Second.
Second by Mr. Buscaino. Thank you. Just please get that to the clerks as soon as you can.
Yes, of course, thank you.
Mr. Bloomingfield?
Yes, I have an amendment on item thirty-seven. I'll read it. I move that item number thirty-seven on today's city council agenda be amended to replace recommendation number five with the following technical. Five, direct the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority to work with the council offices outlined in recommendation number four to identify service providers for these safe parking lots.
Is there a second?
Second, I'll take the second.
Second by Mr. Buscaino. Any others, Mr. Bloomingfield?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson. Can you also send that to the clerk as soon as you can?
Will do.
Mr. Harris Dawson?
I think you have a request to continue item number fourteen until October thirteenth.
Without objection, that will be the order. Item fourteen. Mr. Price?
Good morning, Madam President and members. I'd like to hold item thirteen until next Tuesday, Madam President.
Okay, next, well, next week, Mr. Price, next week, we are not meeting. So, would you like to choose a different date?
We're not meeting at all next week.
So, why don't we do, is October thirteenth, okay with you?
Yes, that's fine.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, we'll continue item thirteen at the request of Mr. Price until October thirteenth.
And also, Madam President, I need to recuse myself from item thirty-seven.
You have an amendment for thirty-seven, or do you like to...
No, no, I need to recuse myself because of conflict.
Okay, there's been a request for Mr. Price to recuse himself on item thirty-seven. Any others?
No, no, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you. So, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and can you let us know what items we can be prepared to vote on? Items that public comment has already been satisfied?
Yes, Madam President. That would be two through twelve, and fifteen through twenty-nine, and thirty-one.
Okay, items two through twelve, items fifteen to twenty-nine, and item thirty-one. So, let's go ahead and prepare to vote on that item.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Here.
Sidiyo.
Sidiyo, present.
Harris Dawson.
Here.
Corretz.
Present.
Grecorian.
Here.
Lee.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
O'Farrell.
Present.
Price.
Present.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rue.
Present.
Westen.
Madam Clerk, please continue.
Oh, sorry, the screen went blank. Thirteen members present in the quorum, Madam President.
Okay, first order of business.
Approval of the minutes of September twenty-nine, 2020.
Mr. Harris Dawson moves, and Mr. Buscaino seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Bonin moves, and Mr. Lee seconds, next.
Madam President, would council like all items to go forth with today?
Without objection, that will be the order.
Item number one is an item notice for public hearing. For item one, the tabulated value of the opposing ballots cast does not exceed the tabulated value of the supporting ballots cast. Sixty-six point two four percent to thirty-three point seventy-six percent. Thus, a majority protest is found not to exist, and the proposed establishment of the Chinatown Property and Business Improvement District may be authorized at this time. Items two through thirty-one are items for which public hearings have been held. For the record, there is a technical correction to item four. The correct case number is CPC dash two zero one eight dash six four three six dash ZCJ dash SPR. The corrected Planning and Land Use Management Committee report is now online. Items thirty-two through thirty-six are items for which public hearings have not been held. Item number thirty-seven on the supplemental agenda is an item for which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order.
Madam President, there is a request to hold item thirty on the desk for an amendment.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and do that. So, members, if you wish to call any of these items special for discussion or amendments. Mr. Sidiyo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am on item number thirty-four. I'm submitting a resolution that clarifies the Seventh Clause with additional countries of origin that may be impacted. The substitute resolution also includes support for administrative relief for TPS holders until legislation is enacted.
Mr. Sidiyo, are you introducing a substitute motion or an amendment to this item?
Substitute. Substitute resolution.
Okay. Okay, do you have a second on this?
Second.
Second by Mr. Buscaino. Thank you. Just please get that to the clerks as soon as you can.
Yes, of course, thank you.
Mr. Bloomingfield?
Yes, I have an amendment on item thirty-seven. I'll read it. I move that item number thirty-seven on today's city council agenda be amended to replace recommendation number five with the following technical. Five, direct the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority to work with the council offices outlined in recommendation number four to identify service providers for these safe parking lots.
Is there a second?
Second, I'll take the second.
Second by Mr. Buscaino. Any others, Mr. Bloomingfield?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson. Can you also send that to the clerk as soon as you can?
Will do.
Mr. Harris Dawson?
I think you have a request to continue item number fourteen until October thirteenth.
Without objection, that will be the order. Item fourteen. Mr. Price?
Good morning, Madam President and members. I'd like to hold item thirteen until next Tuesday, Madam President.
Okay, next, well, next week, Mr. Price, next week, we are not meeting. So, would you like to choose a different date?
We're not meeting at all next week.
So, why don't we do, is October thirteenth, okay with you?
Yes, that's fine.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, we'll continue item thirteen at the request of Mr. Price until October thirteenth.
And also, Madam President, I need to recuse myself from item thirty-seven.
You have an amendment for thirty-seven, or do you like to...
No, no, I need to recuse myself because of conflict.
Okay, there's been a request for Mr. Price to recuse himself on item thirty-seven. Any others?
No, no, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you. So, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and can you let us know what items we can be prepared to vote on? Items that public comment has already been satisfied?
Yes, Madam President. That would be two through twelve, and fifteen through twenty-nine, and thirty-one.
Okay, items two through twelve, items fifteen to twenty-nine, and item thirty-one. So, let's go ahead and prepare to vote on that item.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidiyo.
Sidiyo, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretz.
Aye.
Grecorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Westen.
Thirteen ayes, these items are adopted.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and move to public comment. Madam Clerk, please read the call-in information, followed by our city attorney.
As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call six six nine two five four five two five two and use meeting ID number one six zero five three five eight four six six, and then press the pound key. Then press pound again when prompted for the participant ID number. Once submitted in the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. Please call six six nine two five four five two five two and use meeting ID number one six zero five three five eight four six six. Press pound, then press pound again when prompted for participant ID, and once submitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak.
Madam President, I'll read out the speaking rules and the amendment for item number thirty. I'll start with number thirty. It's a motion by Mr. Buscaino, seconded by Mr. Sidiyo, I believe Price, and you, Ms. Martinez. It provides that on item thirty, the Transportation Committee report, recommendations A and D be deleted and replaced with the following new recommendations, A and D. So, for A, it reads, beginning October fifteen, 2020, resume parking enforcement and impounds when applicable for street cleaning, abandoned vehicles, oversize and overnight restrictions, peak hour and anti-grid block zones, and expired registration, and conduct public outreach and education between October first, 2020, and October fourteenth, 2020. Recommendation D reads, delay the impounding of vehicles in which there is vehicle dwelling, and report in thirty to sixty days with a next step plan. And as for the speaking rules, to members of the public calling in, when it's your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak on. You have one minute to speak, up to three minutes total, and one minute if you wish for general public comment. Please begin with the items before providing general public comment. We'll tell you when your time's up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you're not speaking on topic, if we can't tell whether you're speaking on topic, you will get one brief warning from me or the president. If you do not immediately get clearly on topic or get straight off topic, the president will cut you off, and you'll forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we'll move on to the next speaker. We will take thirty minutes total public comment. The items open for public comment are items one, thirty, and thirty-two through thirty-seven. Finally, for members of the public calling in to speak, Zoom is reconfigured its settings. What we're doing is we're admitting everybody into the waiting room at once, muted. Please be listening not just to your devices but to the telephone. As soon as you hear anyone read off the last four digits of your phone number or other information that helps you identify you, that means you're the one live in the meeting ready to speak. At that point, please press star six. Tell us which items you want to speak on, and it'll be your turn to speak. Please turn down the volume on your other devices because there's a time delay. Because there's a time delay, also, please don't just listen to your other devices. When you're waiting for your turn, please listen on your phone for somebody to list out your number. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you, just go ahead and take the first caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in one one zero eight, please press star six.
Yeah?
Please state your name and item you'd like to speak on.
Daniel Guss, all items, general public comment.
Okay, you have three minutes for your items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Okay, great, hi. Just for identification purposes, I have a column in City Watch L.A. this week titled, Gil Sidiyo Tells Constituent "F U," Then Denies It. And it's an important read for people who follow city council meetings. For example, with item number thirty-four. Last week, two weeks ago today, Mr. Sidiyo commented towards someone who went off on Mayor Garsteve regarding eminent domain, and Mr. Sidiyo's comment to that person who disagreed with him was "F U." So, I'm looking at item number thirty-four today, which is a Sidiyo item in which he's talking about the Dream and Promise Act. And I don't know how Mr. Sidiyo would feel, but if I were to channel him, if somebody were to disagree with Mr. Sidiyo, they might say "F U" to Mr. Sidiyo or to Mr. Sidiyo's ideas. And I don't know if they would then lie about their position there, but since Mr. Sidiyo takes a posture towards people who disagree with the city's items, I will say "F U" because I'm echoing Mr. Sidiyo's choice of words towards people who disagree. That's item number thirty-four. Similarly, oh, I forgot, item number thirty-three.
Mr. Harris Dawson?
Uh, so do you have a, a request to continue item number fourteen until October thirteenth?
Without objection, that will be the order. Item fourteen. Mr. Price?
Good morning, Madam President and members. Uh, I'd like to hold item thirteen until next Tuesday, Madam President.
Okay, next, well, next week, Mr. Mr. Price, next week, we are not meeting. So would you like to choose a different date?
We're not meeting at all next week.
So why don't we do is, uh, October thirteenth, okay with you?
Yes, that's fine.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll continue item thirteen at the request of Mr. Price until October thirteenth.
And also, also, Madam President, I need to recuse myself from item thirty-seven.
Uh, you have an, do you have an amendment for thirty-seven, or do you like to?
No, no, I need to recuse myself because of conflict.
Okay, there's been a request from Mr. Price to recuse himself on item thirty-seven. Any others?
No, no, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you. So Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and, um, can you let us know what items we can be prepared to vote on, items that public comment has already been satisfied?
Uh, yes, Madam President. That would be two through twelve and fifteen through twenty-nine and thirty-one.
Okay, items two through twelve, items fifteen to fifteen to twenty-nine and item thirty-one. So let's go ahead and prepare to vote on that item.
Blumenfield?
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin?
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino?
Aye.
Sidiyo?
Sidiyo, aye.
Harris Dawson?
Yes.
Kretz?
Aye.
Grekorian?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
O'Farrell?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Rue?
Aye.
Weston?
Thirteen ayes, these items are adopted.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and move to public comment. Madam Clerk, please read the call-in information, followed by our city attorney.
As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call six-six-nine-two-five-four-five-two-five-two and use meeting ID number one-six-zero-five-three-five-eight-four-six-six and then press the pound key. Then press pound again when prompted for the participant ID number. Once submitted in the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. Please call six-six-nine-two-five-four-five-two-five-two and use meeting ID number one-six-zero-five-three-five-eight-four-six-six. Press pound, then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. And once submitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak.
Uh, Madam President, uh, I'll read out the speaking rules and the amendment for item number thirty. I'll start with number thirty. Uh, it's a motion by Mr. Buscaino, seconded by Mr. Sidiyo, uh, I believe Price and you, Ms. Martinez. It provides that, um, uh, on item thirty, the Transportation Committee report, uh, recommendations A and D be deleted and replaced with the following new recommendations, A and D. So for A, it reads, beginning October fifteen, twenty-twenty, resume parking enforcement and impounds when applicable for street cleaning, abandoned vehicles, oversize and overnight restrictions, peak hour and anti-grid block zones, and expired registration, and conduct public outreach and education between October first, twenty-twenty, and October fourteenth, twenty-twenty. Recommendation D reads, delay the impounding of vehicles in which there is vehicle dwelling and report in thirty to sixty days with a next step plan. And as for the speaking rules, um, to members of the public calling in, when it's your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak on. You have one minute to speak, up to three minutes total, and one minutes if, minute if you wish for general public comment. Please begin with the items before providing general public comment. We'll tell you when your time's up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you're not speaking on topic, if we can't tell whether you're speaking on topic, you will get one clear, one brief warning from me or the president. If you do not immediately get clearly on topic or get straight off topic, the president will cut you off and you'll forfeit the rest of your speaking time and we'll move on to the next speaker. We will take thirty minutes total public comment. The items open for public comment are items one, thirty, and thirty-two through thirty-seven. Finally, for members of the public calling in to speak, um, Zoom is reconfigured its settings. What we're doing is we're admitting everybody into the, uh, the waiting room at once muted. Um, please be listening not just to your devices but to the telephone as you, as soon as you hear anyone, uh, read off the last four digits of your phone number or other information that helps you identify you, that means you're the one live in the meeting ready to speak. At that point, please press star six. Uh, tell us which items you want to speak on and it'll be your turn to speak. Uh, please turn down the volume on your other devices because there's a time delay. Because there's a time delay, also, please don't just listen to your other devices. When it's, you're waiting for your turn, please listen on your phone for somebody to, um, to list out your number. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Just go ahead and take the first caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in one-one-zero-eight, please press star six.
Yeah?
Please state your name and item you'd like to speak on.
Daniel Gus, all items, general public comment.
Okay, you have three minutes for your items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Hi, um, just for identification purposes, I have a column in City Watch LA this week titled Gil Sidiyo Tells Constituent "F You," Then Denies It. And it's an important read for people who follow city council meetings. For example, uh, with item number thirty-four, last week, two weeks ago today, Mr. Sidiyo, uh, commented towards someone who went off on Mayor Garstey regarding eminent domain. And Mr. Sidiyo's comment to that person who disagreed with him, uh, was "F you." So I'm looking at item number thirty-four today, which is a Sidiyo item in which he's talking about, uh, the Dream and Promise Act. And I don't know how Mr. Sidiyo would feel, but if I were to channel him, if somebody were to disagree with Mr. Sidiyo, they might say "F you" to Mr. Sidiyo or to Mr. Sidiyo's ideas. And I don't know if they would, um, then lie about their position there, but since Mr. Sidiyo takes a posture towards people who disagree with the city's items, uh, I will say, um, "F you" because I'm echoing Mr. Sidiyo's choice of words towards people who disagree. That's item number thirty-four. Similarly, oh, I forgot, item number thirty-three, another Sidiyo item. This is regarding, uh, our specialist Vanessa Guillen, who disappeared from her duty station at Fort Hood, Texas. That's a, that's a terrible thing. And I wouldn't disagree with it, but just channeling Mr. Sidiyo's sentiment of "F you" if you disagree with him, just to show how it feels, it, it's not nice. And I know you guys are hit with these things all the time, but you're supposed to be above telling the public "F you." So toward item number thirty-three, not towards the person, just towards Mr. Sidiyo's sentiment, "F you." Okay, I'm going to go on to my general public comment now. Council members, why has the pause committee not met in months? You're only holding two meetings a week. Next week, you're going on recess. And if there isn't enough content for pause to meet in months, even on your reduced schedule, I'm wondering if Ms. Martinez should really reevaluate the purpose of having a pause committee, or maybe blending it with another committee to save even more time. If there aren't enough items to, uh, talk about at a pause committee for months during this type of chaos that we have going on in Los Angeles, I wonder if maybe pause shouldn't be folded into another committee. And I, I wouldn't say "F you" to that. I think pause should be having meetings every week rather than every two weeks, let alone every two or three months. So just some food for thought, Mr. Sidiyo, if you wish to explain your, uh, if Mr. Sidiyo wishes to explain his positions on things, he's welcome to contact me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gus.
Madam Chair, is it?
Yes, Mr. Sidiyo?
Yes, since my name wasn't brought by Mr. Gus, that's amazingly Trumpian. Um, I'll say that, um, with respect to my thoughts about it. But let me be very clear. I was, it was an unattributed quote. As you know, uh, we are subject to that every week. And I was simply mocking, uh, those quotes, the famous, "I yield my time, F you." And so it doesn't reflect my sentiments. It simply reflects a, uh, parroting of something that's very popular amongst the activists. It doesn't, um, obviously, since it's not my expression, nor does it reflect my sentiments. It does not merit my apology. So it is what it is, as some people would say. Maybe they're admired by Mr. Gus or not, but, uh, I, I hope we can move forward from this point and maybe place our eyes on another prize. Thank you.
Could I just go ahead and take the next caller?
Caller with the phone number ending in six-zero-six-eight, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, yes, this is Richie Serjenko from Sunrise Movement and municipal city council. Would like to speak on agenda item one, thirty-five and thirty-six.
Go ahead, you have three minutes.
Uh, in general public comment, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay.
So, and then, uh, so agenda item one, uh, again, voicing my opposition, uh, like many people that called in yesterday and, uh, people that are going to be calling in today, um, you know, there hasn't been, uh, much discussion on your end about the Chinatown bid, and there's no been educating the public about what's really going on. Um, and I thought it was funny yesterday when Strepan, uh, you know, butted in when I mentioned George, started mentioning George Yu's connection, um, to agenda item one, um, and his donations and the fundraisers that he's held for city council members. Um, George Yu is, uh, inextricably linked with agenda item one, so discussing him, um, is not off topic, Strepan. I know you want to flex your O'Melvyn and Myers, uh, you know, work products, but you're not the only one that's read a book before. Um, you know, agenda item one, Chinatown, the Chinatown bids are bad. Um, you know, George Yu, you're enabling his abusive ways. Uh, I dare any council member to stand up for Chinatown residents. Um, this is the same kind of deference that enabled, uh, council member Huizar's corruption. Um, this kind of deference has enabled Yu and Sidiyo to strip affordable housing requirements from a new luxury development approved in Chinatown. Um, you know, it can't go, we keep saying it, the LA city council needs to reject the Chinatown bid. Bids use taxpayer money to fund private security that harass and brutalize unhoused. Um, George Yu has joked about letting the unhoused electrocute themselves to bring about natural selection. He's led the way by bullying unhoused residents both in the bid and outside of his boundaries. Um, bids prioritize development and gentrification. Um, our current system is so rigged that the city's, uh, property automatically votes to support this bid. Um, you know, we need to end this, this, this process. It's an undemocratic system. Have you all had, like, public discussions on the Chinatown bid? Um, but people deserve to know what's really going on. Uh, George Yu leads a lawless organization, wasted city money as they refuse to comply with CPRA requests, even after losing in, uh, in court. George Yu has worked with the consent of council member, uh, Sidiyo, who he's met with over twenty-five times. Um, how many people can say they've met with their council member five times? Let alone twenty-five times? So what, what's, what's the connection between George Yu and Sidiyo? What's, what's really going on? Uh, he makes, George Yu makes sure to support his friends at city hall. Ethics disclosures show that he's personally donated to council members, O'Farrell and Sidiyo. He's hosted fundraisers for Huizar and Harris Dawson. Uh, George Yu has cost the city tens of thousands of dollars for failing to even show up to court over CPRA lawsuit. Um, and then moving on to agenda items thirty-five and thirty-six, they're about, uh, community safety partnerships, CSP. Um, we said to defund the police, not refund the police. Um, this is your new Trojan horse for protecting LAPD's budget. Like, we just don't want money to go to LAPD. Um, if you think that, uh, cops shouldn't be mental health or social workers, um, then why are we having cops deliver food and play basketball with our kids? Um, community services and safeties, uh, safety is great, but it shouldn't be provided by cops, like, you know, people, violent people with guns. Um, and item thirty-six is funny because it diverts money to support CSP at the Newton Division. This is, uh, this, now, this is an opportunity for public education that city council doesn't do, but the Newton Division, uh, that's where Jamie McBride is from. There is the nickname Shooting, uh, Shooting Newton. Uh, Jamie McBride himself has shot five people. Jamie McBride is the director of the LAPD's union, the LAPPL. He's the father to Tony McBride, who recently killed Daniel Hernandez. Um, none of the city council members have publicly stated Daniel Hernandez's name.
Thank you, Speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in four-four-four-seven, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, uh, my name is David Brown. I was calling in to, uh, speak on items one and thirty-six.
Okay, you have two minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, yeah, uh, I, uh, would like to echo, uh, very much the same sentiment as, uh, Richie. Um, I think that as far as, uh, item one, I think, um, not only are business improvement districts, um, writ large, uh, obviously a means to funnel city money to people who've already cost, uh, taxpayers money in other respects and in shown blatant disregard for the, um, for the poor, for the people that live in their neighborhoods. Um, it, it is also baffling to me that this sort of thing continues to happen, um, uh, in the wake of, uh, council member, uh, Huizar's, um, obviously disclosed corruption, which I'm sure will, um, continue to, uh, reveal more connections throughout the city, presumably to many of the same parties that are, um, working on this business improvement district. Um, so not only has there been a, a lack of transparency, uh, as far as the process has been to set it up, but, um, I think on the face, uh, without any other information, it's, uh, should obviously not be approved. Um, as far as, uh, item number thirty-six, um, I definitely agree with the sentiment that, um, the public demand is to defund, not refund, the police. Um, while, uh, on the face, I suppose it might be, um, seen as cute to have police officers, um, uh, on the clock, uh, playing, uh, basketball or delivering food with people. Um, it amounts to, uh, uh, a chance to, uh, try to rehabilitate their image, um, with our money, when what we really want is to have them, uh, defunded. Um, they've already been given so much more money while the city is in a financial crisis. Why not have people who are better qualified and who are not armed deliver many of the same services, um, without the, uh, blatant disregard for, um, appeals from the public to defund the police? So I would urge the city council about now on both of those items. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Speaker.
Next caller?
Caller with the phone number ending in two-three-one-six, please press star six.
Good morning, members of the city council. My name is Jasmine Tovar and I am here representing the Southern American Leadership and Educational Fund to speak on item twenty-four, my apologies, thirty-four. I first want to start by thanking, uh, council member Sidiyo for being a champion for immigrants. Um, we have historically worked with immigrant communities. We come from an immigrant community. We recognize the diversity and importance of TPS holders in this nation and DACA recipients, and we really are here to advocate for the support of the American Promise Act. It is the most comprehensive bill in, um, in the country that's going to provide citizenship, residency pass to more than nine hundred people, including DACA recipients and TPS holders. We know that many of the TPS holders have been legally living in this country, paying more taxes than our precedent, have been working in some of the most needed and, um, you know, places in our communities and are essential workers. And also with the deportation of these communities, we see so many US-born, um, children staying and being separated from their families. So again, we thank everybody's efforts and we're here to advocate for, um, the support of TPS holders, which are a very vibrant community in Los Angeles.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in seven-seven-one-nine, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in seven-seven-one-nine, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in seven-seven-one-nine, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yes, it's Eric Previn. I'd like to speak on all items and a general public comment.
Mr. Previn, you've got three minutes and one minute for your general public comment. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'd like to say that item thirty, which Mr. Fabel mumbled in some revisions, is essentially saying that from October one to the fourteenth, they'll do some outreach. And then on October fifteenth, they'll resume punitive, uh, enforcement and impounding of various vehicles that are in violation. Now, they did say they'll delay the impoundment if somebody's living in the vehicle. But I got to tell you, uh, during a pandemic, I think there's a failure to understand the principle of do no harm, and this violates that directly because you're going to, the people who can't pay are the people who don't have the money who are going down the tubes. So I don't think people are trying to get one over on the city during the global pandemic, FYI. So I just, it's a very bad system where we have this sponge of city government sucking off of dying people in order to keep themselves afloat. Of course, we're sympathetic. We're also wondering why it is that you don't do competitive bidding and why these agendas have so many market rate units flying out the door, uh, without any opportunity to comment on them. But getting back to the safe parking, again, this is one of the fishiest, um, rollouts I've ever studied. I looked into the Lassa billing for the safe parking that Blumenfield was talking about, and too much money goes out the door for too little provision is what the short answer is. And I just want to get to item one because I know people have a big interest in George Yu's alleged malfeasance and running of the Chinatown bid. I want to know, I want to know whether or not people are aware of the fact that County Board of Supervisors just yesterday put the finishing touches on a project for two-hundred-and-thirty-two units at one-zero-six-zero-Latinia, just about, very short walk from, it's inside the bid, I believe, for a six-thousand-square-foot resource building that will have a kitchen and dining and administrative spaces and so on and so forth. And it's going to cost, it was originally going to cost thirty-seven, now it's going to cost forty-eight million dollars, forty-two million of which is coming from Federal Cares Act coronavirus relief. So I just don't understand why we're going back to a model of George Yu paying private security to rough people up and the kind of shady operations that go on over and over again. And to just address, you know, uh, the police officers are about a rough road. I'm not a necessarily defund so much as I may recalibrate and rethink. But when you have, you know, I think in the two little community safety partnership grants going out, first of all, they're from a foundation. Well, who? It's from the police foundation, but who gave the money? I scrutinized and couldn't tell. And they're giving essentially overtime, two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars of overtime.
Mr. Previn, do you want to move on to your general public comment?
Yeah, I'll go on to my general public comment. And I'd like to thank Javec Somek from item fourteen, who has both LLCs that have been mired in a litigation, and Mr. Harris Dawson is trying to score, uh, a new council district office. Uh, it's been tied up for a long time, and that is fishy as all fishy gets. Um, and, and just to go back one more time to the, uh, question of, uh, delaying, you know, impoundment of people who are living in their cars and such, I want to draw attention to the odious chapter in which Mitch Englander, the FBI indictee, was touting with pride as all the council would clap, the number of smart boots that LAPD and DOT had affixed to vehicles. Smart boots are a way of clamping down for several hundred dollars on a hapless constituent who has failed to live up to the promise to pay your tickets, but it became so egregious, ten thousand, he was boasting, just before they carted him out with the FBI. So I just think we have to re-envision city government.
Thank you, Mr. Previn.
Caller with the phone number ending in zero-four-nine-two, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Ethan Censor, uh, general public comment.
Sure, you have a minute. Please go ahead.
Thank you, and thanks, uh, council president. My name's Ethan Censor. I'm an organizer with Food and Water Action. Um, I want to thank the council for taking swift action today in regards to the Valley Generating Station and for working with our allies, the Quema Beautiful, to make sure that LA GWP is finding ways to transform its operations and be better at putting environmental justice principles at the center of its decision-making. Uh, particularly, I want to thank the council president for her comments towards, uh, General Manager Adams at the ECCJ Committee about the change in culture that's needed. Um, I would love to see if there are ways that we could demand a real report back on that, on the culture itself. I think that's very important, I agree. Um, no community should be left at the sacrifice zone. We need to be consistent in our rhetoric and our actions in saying that oil and gas infrastructure does not belong in anyone's backyard, period. Um, I personally do work with communities who live near gas storage facilities in Los Angeles, and this week, communities who live near the Play Del Ray Gas Facility were able to get the LA County Democratic Party to pass the resolution calling for the shutdown of that site. Um, other bodies have also spoken up. The Board of Supervisors passed the resolution supporting the closure of Eliso Canyon and Play Del Ray.
Thank you, caller. Let's move on to the next caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in one-one-four-eight, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yes, I'd like to speak on all, all available items.
Sure, you have three minutes.
And, and general public comment, please.
Yes, you have a minute for that, and we're getting some feedback from you. If you have other devices on, if you'd please turn them off, that will help.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
It's all right. Thank you. Please go ahead.
Um, first, um, it would be great if you'd obey all the rules, like you, you fought police and cut people off. Sidiyo, why didn't you cut him off? The council shall not discuss or take action relative to any general public comment.
Speaker, if you want to talk about that in general public comment, that's great, but let's, let's start with the items if you want to. So you have three minutes on the items. Let's start with those.
Is that okay?
Yes, start with the three, any of the items that are open for public comment. Those are items 1, 30, and 32, 37.
Item number one, Chinatown, even yesterday, all these people have taken, all you people have taken campaign contributions from George Yu. Why haven't you recused yourself? The public doesn't understand. You people vote trade. If a council member wants an item, voted on yes, it will be unanimous. The council votes one 99.99% of the time, yes. This is a joke. This is not democracy. You're going to do the same thing today because corrupt Sadio, who's taken money from George Yu, along with Farrell, Dawson, and Hwazar, of course, and some of you others, have taken money from this guy. And you're going to vote yes, no matter what the public wants. That's why we should all vote, all of you, out of office. Every single one of you corrupt people. The cities, item number 32, diesel emissions, this is just a smoke signal. You're establishing the city's position. Item number 33, the murder of Vanessa Gilliam, how tragic it is, you're establishing the city's position, and that's all. It's just a smoke vote so you guys can, because you vote trade, you don't do anything but vote yes on all the corrupt items, so your item can get voted on. Public, look up Los Angeles City Council vote trading. They're all corrupt under Wesson's system of Hwazar, Englander, John Lee investigation for sex prostitutes in Vegas, backdating checks. Number 36, more LAPD funding. Yesterday, you voted $5 million to the LAPD. Now it's this another smokescreen. You just keep funding the LAPD, all of you. You're all going to, look, public, they're all going to vote yes on them. It's a foregone conclusion. They vote yes 99.9% of the time. So why do they even show up? So they can get their silly faces on camera and campaign like they really care, give a damn about the city. Is my three minutes up or am I in general public comment yet?
Not quite, but you can go to general public comment if you want to.
Not quite. People, they're, they're going to vote all yes. They should be recusing themselves on item number one. They should be, but they're not going to. Krikorian, your comments yesterday, you work for the city of Los Angeles. Michael Gus is right.
Okay, and now general-
Am I in public comment yet, sir?
Yes, general public now, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item number 14, Dawson, we are, I, this is, yeah, another field office for Dawson, another office move. These corrupt, sleazy, Los Angeles sleazy council has given sleazy marqueezied Dawson 488,000 for an office move, 305,000 for an office move, 541,000 for this office move, item number 14. It's over $1,300,000 for this corrupt individual's offices. People, can you, can you use a million dollars? Can the people of the city use a million dollars? All for this destination Crenshaw crap, which will not fly. Item number 25, purchasing properties. How are you going to do it without retail? You know, item number 14, we beg you to put your office on Crenshaw next to the post office. We'll be there every day.
Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in 5245, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 5245, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 5245, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 0357, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Zach Fisher. I'd like to speak on items 1 and 36, as well as general public comment, please.
You have two minutes for your items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. So on item one, this is another opportunity for this council, I believe, to show us that the choice between landlords and everyone else, they're going to choose landlords. And that's really problematic because the landlord's business model is parasitism, sadistic parasitism. There is nothing that landlords actually add of value. That's why they need everyone else working for them all day long, so that we can give them our hard-earned money so that they become in a more powerful position to leech off of us like the parasites they are. And shame on this council for always siding with the parasites over the people who are actually busting their ass working out there. On item 36, so, I mean, at this point, like, the facts are the facts, right? If we leave the Mayor Garcietti fantasy land where the police are serving us in any kind of guardians, the truth is, if the police, the LAPD are a group of violent extremists and complacent sheep who won't speak up about the violent extremists. How many hundreds of people have died on this land in LA at the hands of police needlessly? Woe to the hands that shed that costly blood. Police terror must end. And once again, shame, shame on this council for allowing the terrorism and the violent extremism of the LAPD to go unchecked. Now, for general comment, for this racket of a council that dares claim to say they have some kind of democratic legitimacy, as they violate their own rules, tapping us off at three minutes for public comment, when in the agenda for today's meeting, it says we get 10 minutes. Shame on each and every one of you. You've let yourselves get fat. You've let yourselves get into a place of privilege at the expense of everyone else. You will reap what you sow. Thank you so much.
Thank you, caller. Next caller?
Caller with the phone number ending in 4208, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hey, this is Rob Quad. I'd like to speak on item 1, 35, 36, and general public comment.
You have three minutes for the items, followed by one minute for general public comment. Please go ahead.
Thank you. And I'd like to shout out, start paying the council member Price, Price for violating the Political Reform Act in exactly 50% of the council meetings in the month of September. For item number one, it's just remarkable to see not one word of discussion from our council despite multiple hearings, endless comment from residents, business owners pleading for you to reject the bid and hold George Yu accountable. We didn't get lip service, any discussion from any of you. This is just kind of the council of mutual back scratching and lobbyist empowerment. I agree with Richie as far as, you know, the issues with, you know, how George Yu has reigned supreme in Chinatown, gentrifying, getting affordable housing stripped from development, losing their only grocery store. I mean, when you talk about putting community resources in neighborhoods, we're losing them. But none of you speak up. Maury Goldman, your good old friend, good pal, is a lobbyist for the bid. And I think it's worth noting that Urban Solutions, Maury Goldman, they now indicted Maury Goldman, has fundraised over 600,000 for LA city officials. They include Mayor Garcietti and councilmembers Gil Sadio, Bob Blumenfield, Paul Krikorian, Paul Corretts, Neri Martinez, Monica Rodriguez, Marquis Harris Dawson, Current Price, Herb Wesson, Mike Bonin, Mitchell Farrell, Jose, and Rochelle Wezar, Team Wezargo, Joe Buscaino, and Eric Garcietti, who I already mentioned. So I just think it's worth noting, you know, what kind of friends he has in high places. Maury Goldman, you know, has met with Gil Sadio 25 times in office. And that's only what he's actually reported and filed with Public Records Act request. For item 35 and 36, it's worth noting the incestuous connections our police commissioners have to the local nonprofit complex, money, funding studies from those nonprofits. And then those studies being used to validate those same nonprofits diverting money to the LA Police Foundation to go towards CSP grants. Only a minor conflict of interest that undermines those studies. We said defund, not refund the police. And this is just kind of your Trojan horse attempt to refund the police. For item 36, we obviously have the shooting Newton Division, you know, spearheaded in part by Officer Tony McBride, who shot Daniel Hernandez. You know, she recently had brunch with her dad, Jamie McBride, the head of the LAPTL, and he had a MAGA Life Matter shirt on. Tony feels the same way about the president. She's a MAGA cop influencer that loves nothing more than unloading her gun on targets, preferably people when, you know, the city allows her to, which is, you know, her day job. I also think it's worth noting, Tony McBride went off to Havasu this weekend to celebrate, you know, maybe we should quarantine Officer McBride. I don't know. For item, general public comment, I want to speak about the redistricting appointments. Please, please appoint somebody decent, not city hall insiders, and definitely not former elected LA city officials. Should know that, you know, going to be ranking your appointment based upon their independence and how it reflects upon you. So far, surprisingly, councilmember Wesson is in the number one spot, and Mike Fear number two. And a couple Eric Garciettis appointed again. There's a giant hole in the middle. And as bottom, we got Bob Blumenfield, Monica Rodriguez, Gil Sadio, and David Ruh, all appointing elected officials or city hall insiders. You know, I think this just goes to show that we need to push for a ban on ex parte communications like the state of California. Or you can agree with Mike Fear, who's promised that he's not going to be communicating with his commissioner after appointment. We've also sent you some forms to your offices so you can actually do real disclosure. Go ahead and do that and make yourself look.
Thank you, Rob. Okay, that concludes public comment. Let's go ahead and vote on the following items, Madam Clerk. Item number one, item number 32, 33, 35, and 36. Let's go ahead and call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Ruh.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
14 ayes, these items are adopted.
Madam President, this is Buscaino.
Yes, Mr. Buscaino.
I just want to recognize what we just approved on items 35 and 36. And Mr. Harris Dawson, the expansion of community safety partnership program, just want to congratulate him on true community policing model that should be modeled across the country. So congratulations to our South LA community.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to item 30. Madam Clerk, go ahead and call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, this is 38.
Yes. For the record, we are, council is voting on 38, which is the amendment. Okay, and let's start from the top. Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Um, aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez. Ruh.
Sorry, aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
Going back to councilmember Rodriguez.
Aye.
14 ayes, the item is adopted as amended.
Okay, let's move on to item 37 as amended. Mr. Sadio, I'm sorry. Let's move on to, I meant to say item, item 37, I'm right. So this was amended, and Mr. Price has made, has asked to be recused on this item, so let's take him off the board. Mr. Blumenfield, would you like to speak on this item, item 37?
No, amendment's just technical.
All right, thank you. Let's go ahead and vote on this item.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price is recused. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Ruh.
Aye.
Wesson.
Yes.
13 ayes, the item is adopted as amended.
Let's move on to item 34. There was a substitute resolution introduced by Mr. Sadio. It's been circulated. Just go ahead and vote on whether it's a substitute. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Ruh.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
Going back to councilmember Price.
Aye.
14 ayes, the substitute reso is now before council.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on the item now. Go ahead, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Ruh.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
14 ayes, the substitute reso is adopted.
Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have any verbal motions?
Yes, Madam President, there are six.
Madam President.
Why don't we start with the first one? Mr. Ruh?
Madam, I'm sorry, I don't have a verbal motion, but I had actual clarification on item 30. I didn't realize 38, 38 amendment was voting on the whole item as well, because could I possibly pull item 30 for a question?
If you're not going to, do you want to just vote? How would you like, do you want to re-vote again?
Well, I wanted, I had a couple of questions to see if they're-
Or you want to register your vote as a no?
Reconsider- For reconsideration? Could we do 34 reconsideration?
If you'd like to change your vote, we can go ahead and do that now.
Sure, I'll change my vote.
All right, thank you. What is your vote?
Do, no.
Thank you. Madam, Madam Clerk, can you please, uh, move on to the first verbal motion that's been introduced? You said there were six?
That is correct.
All right, thank you, go ahead.
The first Rule 16 motion introduced by Councilmember Rue is to transfer appropriate $6,000 from the AB 1290 fund from account 281204 to the Board of Public Works Fund, account number 3040, contractual services for the fiscal year 2021 median maintenance efforts in the Larchmont community coordinated by the Office of Community Beautification, with services to be provided by the Korea Town Youth and Community Center. And a seconder?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sadio, next one.
Thank you. The next verbal Rule 16 motion, also introduced by Councilmember Rue, is to transfer an appropriate $50,000 in the pipeline franchise revenue portion of the CD4 Real Property Trust Fund to the Street Services Fund, salaries overtime, for the maintenance of three street medians in CD4 Chandler Boulevard, Vineland Avenue, and Highland Avenue. And a seconder?
Second.
Oh, second by Mr. Blumenfield, next.
Thank you. Uh, next verbal motion to be referred to the Public Works and Gang Reduction Committee has been introduced by Councilmember Harris Dawson. This is to approve, approve an exception to the city's one-year street cut moratorium on West 37th Street to allow for the relocation of power service at 1284 to 1288 West 37th Street. And a seconder?
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sadio.
Thank you.
Next.
Next is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Lee, referred to the Transportation Committee relative to prohibiting the parking of vehicles that are in excess of 22 feet in length and over 84 inches in height during the hours at 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM along both sides of Rinaldi Street from Dulsett Avenue to Wilbur Avenue. Is there a second to this resolution introduced by Councilmember Lee?
Sadio, aye. I mean, Sadio, seconds.
Second by Mr. Sadio.
Next is a motion introduced by Councilmember Harris Dawson, referred to the Planning and Land Use Management Committee relative to the planning department in consultation with the city attorney to prepare a report with recommendations relative to the loss of affordable housing and over-concentration of student housing near the University Park Expo Park community. Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
That's been second by Mr. Blumenfield, next.
Finally, there is a commendatory resolution introduced by Councilmember Bonin, recognizing the Venice Family Clinic on the occasion of its 50th anniversary in the city of Los Angeles for their countless and invaluable contributions it has made to the city's health and well-being. Is there a second to this resolution?
Second.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez, next.
Madam President, those are all the, um, verbal motions.
All right, thank you. Let's go to Mr. Buscaino, do you have a verbal motion, sir?
Yes, Madam President, I only have one, and this is, um, regards to donations of surplus equipment at below-market value. I moved that the city council request the city attorney, with the assistance of the chief legislative analyst, prepare, present an amendment to LA AC Section 22.547 to broaden the categories under which donations of surplus equipment may be made, including but not limited to donations of surplus equipment to foreign governments.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Any others, Mr. Buscaino?
That's it, thank you.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President, I do have two. Uh, the first moving clause is now therefore be it resolved that with the concurrence of the mayor, by the adoption of this resolution, the city of Los Angeles hereby includes in its 2019-2020 federal legislative program, support for HR 8270 Spear, the We Are Vanessa Guillen Act of 2020, which would significantly revise how the military, how the military investigates allegations of sexual harassment and sexual assault.
All right.
Second.
Next one, Ms. Rodriguez?
Uh, the second is, uh, I therefore move that the city administrative officer, with the assistance of the Economic Workforce Development Department and the city attorney, be instructed to report on the steps necessary to assign U, uh, United States Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration subaward Z, uh, 07-19-62011.33 grant to initiating change in our neighborhood in order to operate a business accelerator and resource center at the property located at 13168 and 13172 Van Nuys Boulevard.
That's a good one, I'll second that.
Mr. Buscaino, a second. Any others, Ms. Rodriguez?
That's it, thank you.
Seems like Mr. Buscaino's excited about that. Okay, Mr. Blumenfield? Do you have any verbal motions?
I, I have one verbal motion, and it's actually co-presented by, uh, Mr. Bonin and seconded by, uh, Mr. Harris Dawson, and I'll read the two moving clauses. Uh, clause one, I therefore move that the council instruct the CA, the city administrative officer to enter into conversations with financial institutions that serve as bond underwriters for the city of Los Angeles, and push them to offer the city of Los Angeles long-term loans with terms of up to 30 years to meet all of its borrowing needs without charging any interest or fees. I further move that the council express its support for actions by the Federal Reserve Bank of the United States to offer long-term loans with terms of up to 30 years to meet all of our borrowing, all, all of the borrowing needs of all state and local governments and government units in the United States without charging them interest or fees.
That was co-presented by Mr. Bonin, you said?
Co-presented by Mr. Bonin, seconded by Mr. Marquis Harris Dawson.
Okay, Mr. Bonin, can I get a confirmation?
You can get a confirmation, thank you.
Thank you, what about Mr. Harris Dawson?
Armed.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Krikorian?
Uh, thank you very much, Madam President, I have one, uh, resolution and one motion. Uh, the moving clause of the resolution, uh, provides now therefore be it resolved that the city council pursuant to the California Vehicle Code, Section 22507, hereby prohibits the parking of vehicles that are in excess of 22 feet in length or over seven feet in height during the hours of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM along both sides of the following streets, Laurel Canyon Boulevard between Victory Boulevard and Oxnard Street, Victory Boulevard between Witsit Avenue and Colfax Avenue, Oxnard Street between Witsit Avenue and Colfax Avenue, Burbank Boulevard between Witsit Avenue and Colfax Avenue. Be it further resolved that upon adoption of the resolution, the Department of Transportation be directed to post signs giving notice of a tow-away no parking restriction for oversized vehicles with the specific hours details as the above, uh, at the above locations, and be it further resolved that the Department of Transportation be authorized to make technical corrections or clarifications to the above instructions in order to effectuate the intent of this resolution.
Second.
Thank you.
Second by Mr. Buscaino, your next one?
The moving clause of the motion reads as follows. I therefore move that the city council instruct the chief legislative analyst in concert with the Los Angeles Police Department and the Office of the City Attorney to report on possible ways to more effectively limit the use of modified mufflers, especially in noise-sensitive areas.
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Farrell.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio.
Madam President, uh, let me, uh, state this moving clause. Uh, I therefore move that council instruct the Housing and Community Investment Department to review the proposed changes to the AHSC program round six draft guidelines, and report, if necessary, with any city comments on these guidelines prior to the public comment deadline.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blumenfield, any others, Mr. Sadio?
Uh, no, Madam President.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk, what's next?
Council has motions for posting and referral?
Okay, posted and referred members, are there any announcements?
Yes.
Mr. Corretz?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I, I want to remind people that today is, uh, the last day of ovarian cancer awareness, which is in the month of September, and I'm wearing my teal tie as a reminder to honor the day Los Angeles City Hall and the LAX pylons, uh, will be illuminated in teal-colored lights for the third year in a row. Um, this is the fourth year in a row that we're taking a couple minutes to, uh, discuss ovarian cancer. We usually have a special presentation at City Hall, but we'll have to admire, uh, City Hall from afar due to COVID-19. But I'd once, once again like to thank the LE-based grassroots nonprofit, um, founded by Paulinda Babini, when, after she lost her daughter at 20 years old. Um, doctors then told her that although she showed symptoms, she was too young to have ovarian cancer, and by the time they found that that indeed was it, it was too late. Um, and out of, uh, Paulinda's devastation was, uh, came the founding of the Circle that works, uh, closely with, uh, uh, medical leaders and cancer survivors to educate the public about this deadly disease. Um, early detection is the key to finding it, although, um, tests are still argued about in terms of their validity, um, and in what, in terms of whether insurance companies will pay for them. Uh, this disease has about a 50% mortality rate, and those who recover, uh, often have a, a significant chance of it reoccurring. Um, so, uh, uh, I want to thank Councilmember Martinez and Rodriguez for joining me this year and past years for this recognition. For further information, I invite the public to visit the Ovarian Cancer Circle's website um, at the ovariancancercircle.org, um, and to, uh, recognize this day and this effort.
Thank you, Mr. Corretz, Ms. Rodriguez?
Yeah, if I could just add on to, uh, thank you, Mr. Corretz, and, uh, you know, I think this is just a really good reminder for everyone, given what lays in the balance of, uh, the threat to the Affordable Care Act right now. Uh, last night was a perfect display of ju, the, just the nonsensical nature of what's, uh, what is in power right now. Uh, and I'm being kind, but it should be a call to action for everyone. Because of the circumstances of what the testing, uh, the, the testing that is required to detect ovarian cancer, uh, there's already restrictions and difficulties for women obtaining the kind of gynecological exams that are, uh, available to help provide early detection. And so when we think about what possibly could happen with this next Supreme Court justice appointment, and the threats that it has to women's health across this country, everyone should be up in arms and frankly motivated to do everything possible, not just in this upcoming election, but to do everything possible to help prevent the course of action that might come as a result of the next Supreme Court justice nomination process. So, um, thank you, Mr. Corretz, for always, uh, helping to, you know, bring this, uh, very important issue to, uh, to the attention of, of all of us here in the city of Los Angeles. Uh, but I, I would just wanted to add to that, that there is no more important time for us to be reminded of the disparities in access to healthcare, uh, here in the city and across the country for so many women, and, uh, it's important that it's, uh, this serves as a critical reminder, these are legitimately life and death situations, and so, uh, it's important that everyone has access to good healthcare in this country. And, uh, my thanks to you for, for always bringing this forward.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez, um, I couldn't agree with you more, Mr. Corretz, um, thank you very much for always highlighting the awareness campaign during Ovarian Cancer Month. Each and every year since I've been here, you've been, um, incredible advocate. I also want to thank Paulinda, uh, with the Ovarian Cancer Circle, I know Ms. Rodriguez and I have had the pleasure of working with her. Um, she's dedicated her entire life to saving other women's lives through the awareness after she lost her daughter, Robin. So if she's listening, Paulinda, thank you for continuing to carry your, your, the work forward, and, um, we just need to ensure and encourage women every single day and teach them about how important it is to focus on our own health as we're taking care of everyone else, right, Ms. Rodriguez? We need to make sure that we're taking care of ourselves, it gets early screening, detection is very, very important, make sure, making sure that we have access to quality healthcare. So with that, Mr. Corretz, thank you very much for including us, I am wearing my teal color this morning, so thank you for the reminder. Are there any other announcements this morning? If not, we're going to move on to adjourned motions? Any adjourned motions? Ms. Rodriguez, why don't we start with you?
Madam Chair?
Thank you.
Uh, yes, Mr. Sadio?
Had my hand up, my virtual hand was up.
Oh, all right, just popped up, but go ahead.
Um, so, this morning I participated in a press conference on October 11th at the corner of Broadway and Olympic at 11:00 AM. People will gather, uh, for a march and caravan in support of Full Rights for, uh, immigrants. Uh, this is being led by the Full Rights for Immigrants Coalition. Uh, it is the 26th anniversary of the Great March Against Proposition 187. Last night, we all saw the incredible show, uh, the hypocrisy, uh, the failure and lack of leadership. There was an announcement yesterday that the Trump administration intended to, uh, call on, uh, raids and deportations in quote sanctuary cities. We are a city of sanctuary. Uh, we reject that. It is another act of intimidation, another effort to divide our country. Uh, it is a continued embracing of racism and anti-immigrant hysteria. Uh, this is so, uh, typical of a desperate despot that Donald Trump is, uh, but we will not be intimidated nor deterred. We will march on October 11th, we will gather at Broadway and Olympic, proceed north to City Hall. Uh, it will be a peaceful demonstration. All that immigrants want and demand is simple, an opportunity to, uh, legalize their status, to obtain a green card, to live here legally, uh, to respect the rule of law, to continue to make their contributions to our society, to continue the traditions of this country, uh, and to realize their greatest hopes and aspirations, not necessarily for themselves, but for their children, and for a better future for this city and for this country. And so I want to bring attention to that event, October 11th, 11:00 AM, uh, Broadway and Olympic, Full Rights for, uh, Immigrants Coalition. Uh, I will be there and I hope to see all of you there, uh, and join us in that march. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Any other announcements, members? Okay, let's, uh, Mr. Blumenfield, did you have an announcement?
Uh, no, that was for adjournment memory.
Okay, let me go back to Ms. Rodriguez. Um, Ms. Rodriguez, did you have, uh, and, uh, adjourned motion?
Yes, Madam President, thank you. Uh, colleagues, today I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of a friend and former San Fernando Tiger, Michael Osorio. Michael Rafael Osorio was born on September 7th, 1973 in Los Angeles. At an early age, Michael embodied a vivacious spirit with intense sensitivity for humanity. When you talk about his loved ones today, they all echo that Michael had an infectious smile, a fun-loving spirit, and could have you laughing for hours. Michael carried his fun-loving personality and intellect to San Fernando High School and emerged Fernando High School and emerged as the life of the party. Through his involvement with the cheer team as a yell leader, student government, and writing for the school newspaper, it was clear to everyone that Michael was becoming a well-rounded person ready to accomplish whatever he set out to do. As an adult, Michael brought joy, tenacity, boldness, strength, and intellectual curiosity to almost everything that he did. His intolerance for injustice was matched only by his love for community. From his acceptance into UCLA to his rise as director and officer of compliance at various large health insurance companies, Michael remained steadfast in his goals. However, his true passions were Broadway musicals, concerts, sporting events, shopping, and television. He was also a die-hard L.A. sports fan and loved playing tennis regularly. His Instagram feed is filled with pictures of shopping in Paris, climbing the ruins of Machu Picchu, marching for human rights, and enjoying the beaches of Puerto Rico. What's notable is how often he enjoyed sharing these times with his family and close friends. While Michael was close to his friends, if you talked to him today, he would probably say that his closest confidant and his partner in crime was his younger sister Cindy. They shared a love for sports, music, and national politics. They could be found on any given weekend laughing together and bragging about each other's accomplishments. He loved his sister Cindy, his brother Eric, and his nephews and nieces. His nephews and nieces thought he was the cool, fun-loving uncle who expressed his love for them through his generosity and endless support. As the son of Salvadoran immigrant parents, Michael remained proud of his culture. From the love of his mother's pupusas and food that he would rave about to the importance of family connectedness, it was clear that Michael came from strong roots and deeply respected his mother and father. When talking to his mother, he would regularly answer the phone with, "¿Cómo está la mami más chula del mundo?" Michael adored his parents and was conscious that his success was a result of all of their hard work. He gave back to them tirelessly, taking them to travel the world and to international soccer games as VIPs. He also focused on the everyday little things that would make any parent feel special, such as treating them to Sunday brunches and making sure he was present for family gatherings. Michael is survived by his parents Rafael and Ana Consuelo, his sister Cindy, and his brother-in-law Alejandro, his nieces Samantha and Isabella, his brother Eric, sister-in-law Sylvia, nephews and nieces Eric, Christopher, and Stacy, and his dog Charlie. In a recent post to his sister, Michael wrote, "Love you to the moon, around the sun, through the galaxies, and back again." These are the exact words that we feel about our funny, caring, and generous Michael. We will miss his big infectious smile and his protective, loving presence. May he rest in peace.
That was beautiful, Ms. Rodriguez. If you would please add me to this adjourned motion. I think you and I found out around the same time of Michael's passing, we were in council last week when we learned that he passed away unexpectedly. I can't even imagine what his poor family is going through. This man had such a beautiful, beautiful personality. He'd brighten up a room every time he walked inside, and there was not a time that he would not show up for his family or for his friends. And, you know, it just goes to show you how unexpected life can be sometimes, and this was a life cut too short. Michael was just an incredible friend and a beautiful, beautiful person. So may he rest in peace, and it's been a rough and very sad year for so many of us.
It's been a hell of a 2020.
Yep. Thank you very much, Ms. Rodriguez. Mr. Blumenfield?
Thank you. I had a constituent, actually a famous constituent pass, as reported in Variety, singer Helen Reddy, who became an emblem of feminism with the smash 1972 "I Am Woman," died Tuesday in Los Angeles. She was 78. She was being cared for at the Motion Picture Television Fund Samuel Gold Center for Behavioral Health, which is located in Woodland Hills in my district. At the 1973 Grammys, accepting her Pop Female Vocalist Award, she further cemented her status as a symbol of the women's liberation movement when she thanked God because she makes everything possible. She makes everything possible. She followed up with several more hits, however, "I Am Woman" was an anthem for generations and continues to be. Reddy retired for a time and explained her retirement by saying, quote, "That was one of the reasons that I stopped singing, was when I was shown a modern American history high school textbook and a whole chapter on feminism, and my name and my lyrics were in the book. And I thought, well, I'm part of history now, and how do I top that? I can't top that. So it was an easy withdrawal," she told CBS News. In 1974, Reddy became a naturalized U.S. citizen, and she was appointed by Jerry Brown to a commission with the California Department of Parks and Recs. And her life, her life story was amazing. It was turned into a 2019 feature film called "I Am Woman." The film's director, producer, Anju Moon, released a statement last night, which I want to read briefly. It said, "She paved the way for so many, and the lyrics that she wrote for 'I Am Woman' changed my life forever, like they have done for so many other people, and I will continue to do that for generations to come. She will always be a part of me, and I will always miss her enormously," Anju said. Helen Reddy was also a wonderful mother, a grandmother, and a truly formidable woman. "May her life and leadership for feminism be a shining example for each of our duties as men and women to continue this essential work. Actions, not just words. May Helen Reddy rest in peace, and may she rest in power."
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfield. Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Dr. Eugene Rogalski, a pioneer in the field of HIV health care, who passed away on September 13. Dr. Rogalski never shied away from helping those most marginalized. Rather than turn his back on those suffering from HIV and AIDS, he became a leader in the battle against the disease. His compassion and empathy helped those who were suffering and offered hope when many felt that was lost. He volunteered at many health care centers and utilized his gift of helping others. And I knew Gene when I was a council deputy and a council member in the city of West Hollywood, where from the day of our founding in 1984, we found ourselves to be in the epicenter of the AIDS crisis, with more cases per resident than any other city in the country. Gene and other legendary doctors in his practice, like Dr. Scott Hitt, were leaders in treating AIDS patients, and he was honored for his work many times, including by the Los Angeles Jewish AIDS Society and Altmed HIV Services. He was someone that had a passion for medicine, not only in practicing, but in the teaching at Keck Medical as a professor and in mentoring many other physicians. In addition to medicine, Gene had an appreciation for the arts. He had a love for theater, and he was a well-known art collector. And his gift of around 800 pieces to the USC Fisher Museum of Art was celebrated in a 2016 exhibit that showed his eclectic taste and interest in varied mediums. He'll be missed by many, especially by his partner and husband of 28 years, Joseph Lutell, as well as his many loving nieces and nephews, cousins, and many members of his extended family and friends. He will be well-remembered and sorely missed.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. If there are no other adjourned motions, I have an adjourned motion I'd like to introduce this morning. Colleagues, I would like to adjourn in the memory of my friend Doug Anderson. Douglas Milo Anderson was born on July 1955 in Alec County General Hospital. He was raised by his parents Milo Keith and Dorothy Scott Anderson here in Los Angeles. Doug lived in San Francisco and Lake Tahoe during his young adult years before returning to Los Angeles, where he lived his entire adult life predominantly in the western San Fernando Valley in Woodland Hills and Canoga Park. Doug married Robin Lynn Anderson on May 7, 1983, and together they had two sons, Milo and Noah Anderson. In 1990, Doug entered a loving relationship with Nick Roca, who has been his life partner for more than 30 years. Nick has been a devoted second father to Doug and Robin's two sons Milo and Noah, along with their three grandchildren. Doug preached unconditional love throughout his life. He inspired everyone through his actions and leadership, along with his loyalty and compassion. Doug was a loving man who devoted his life to his family, his partner, and everyone he met. He was a wise man who enjoyed teaching others about his life experiences and also appreciated learning from others. He was filled with an abundance of enthusiasm, positivity, and genuineness, which everyone experienced through his deep, profound, and meaningful conversations. Doug was a 20-year survivor of lung cancer and also survived several other health challenges, including heart disease, surgery, and circulatory problems. He had a profoundly deep relationship with God in his personal life. He believed in God's divinity through all creation. He was a generous, caring, kind-hearted, and smart man with a brilliant smile and a powerful, contagious laugh. His presence would line up any room with brilliance and intensity. He was a natural leader, mentor, teacher, and a trainer. Doug was detail-oriented in all his life roles, including being a father, a grandfather, and a life partner. This was evident in his joy of celebrating holidays, birthdays, special events, and hosting so many dinners at his home and having so many of us there. He also loved nature, traveling, exercising, and looking for the next adventure. Doug embraced his internal life on Sunday, September 5. He will be forever remembered in the hearts and souls of his family, his friends, and those who shared his lifetime, including his biological brother Don Smith and his four biological sisters, including Barbara and Pam, as well as his lifelong adopted sisters Linda Karen and Suzie. With all of these people, Doug would often say, "We are already experiencing a part of heaven here on earth every day." May we forever hold appreciation and love for this incredible and amazing man, who is now a heavenly angel shining brightly across the universe. He is survived by his partner of more than 30 years, Nick Roca, his two sons Milo and Noah Anderson, and their three grandchildren Andrea Alma and Nova Lee Anderson. Doug and Nick have been friends of me and my husband for 28 years. I can't think of a time in my life that Doug and Nick have not been there. When we got married, Doug and Nick were there. When I had my baby, Doug and Nick were there. When we baptized our daughter, Doug and Nick were there. They were just a loving couple that my husband and I always looked up to. They were incredible advocates for the LGBT community in the San Fernando Valley, and I often went to them for advice on how we can increase awareness and support for LGBT community in the San Fernando Valley, and were incredibly supportive of San Fernando pride. I cannot imagine what Nick is going through after losing his life partner, and my heart goes out to him and his entire family. May Doug Anderson rest in peace. Thank you. Mr. Sadio? Mr. Sadio, did you have an adjourned motion?
Yes, I do. I want to adjourn today in memory of a friend and a union brother, Fernando M. Flores Jr., born 1933. He passed away recently. I know his son also, Stephen. Fernando was a plumber with tremendous pride, a third-generation plumber who considered it an honor to do his labor and part of his legacy to his grandfather and his father. And he leaves behind him also a son and grandchildren who are also plumbers. Fernando was the first Mexican-American to be a leader in the plumbers' union, to serve as a business agent for their local local 78. He was active in the Red Cross. He was active in East Los Angeles in the 30th Congressional District. He was a leader in the labor movement, a delegate to the County Federation of Labor, and to a group called LACLA, Latin American Council for Labor Affairs. And I want to also note that he was a friend. When I was at Local 660, they had an interesting organization that had both the plumbers, you could be a plumber and be part of the plumbers' local, but you could also be part of Local 660. And he and his union brothers were very supportive of my efforts to create change at that local. I saw him recently on one of our recent parades and invited him to join me in the parade as we went up San Fernando Eagle Rock Boulevard and had a great lunch at Senior Fish. Great guy, just a solid union guy, a solid Democrat, very proud of his heritage, very proud to be an American, part of an older generation where people took great pride in their labor. He liked to drive around and note certain buildings that he would see and say, "Oh, I built that. Oh, I built that. Oh, I did work on that building." Just very proud of both his profession, proud of his union, proud of his family, proud of his country, and just a great friend. And so I'd appreciate if we could close in the memory of Fernando M. Flores Jr. Bernie, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Any other adjourned motions? We see none. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.